Call the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 14th to order at 7:00 PM. And we'll start out with the roll call.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro.
Eagles Nest Road.
Thank you.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street, Market Township.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? From the previous meeting, May 24, 2023.
I don't have any problem with the minutes, except there is something missing from them, but I don't think it's worth a motion to amend. It's just a reminder, we had asked, or I had asked Eric to provide the Planning Commissioners with a copy of the draft agreement that you were involved with, with the Renovari Group.
Yes.
And he just forgot to do it, so if you-
No, he didn't. That's on me.
Okay. Could you-
I'll send that over tomorrow.
Oh, thank you, sir. Motion to approve the minutes?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comment. If anyone would like to speak right now before we head into any of the agenda items, you're welcome to do so now, or wait for the agenda item. Okay. I guess no one, so we'll move on to new business, 6A, special use permit, public hearing number 061423-1, proposed short-term rental unit to be located at 333 County Road 550 in Marquette, within the rural residential district. Parcel tax ID is 520800405700. The applicant is Nicholas Simon, 2230, or no, wait a minute, I skipped. The applicant is Michael Rubik, 333 County Road 550 in Marquette. Jason.
Thank you. So, good evening. We've received an application for a short-term rental. That is a rental that is allowed within the township and any of our residential districts for a period of under 90 days. So typically, you'd see AirBBS, VRBOs, things of that nature. That amendment was made several years ago, and we have approximately 20 of them within our 54 square miles of township. And this one is up on County Road 550 in the urban residential district, so 333 County Road 550. The subject parcels located in the rural residential zoning district, it's located in Section 4. The surrounding zoning districts are rural residential to the north and south. Resource Production, which is a larger land tract size to the east and west. Property neighbors within 300 feet of the property have been notified. We have not received any negative correspondence on the proposal. As I understand it, there's a young couple, a young family that purchased the property. Subsequently, Mr. Rubik's wife was accepted to Michigan State Veterinary School. They would like to keep the house as they will be moving downstate. And so they're applying to, as an alternative to selling the home, renting it out as a short-term rental. As you can see here, property is located up on County Road 550, as stated. And if approved, I believe Mr. Rubik's aware that there is a loss of your primary residence exemption. I think Eric talked to you probably about that. So if you rent your home for more than 14 days, you lose your primary residence exemption or your PRE. That has been explained to them if it's approved. If it's approved, they'll get a fire inspection and a Marquette Township business license. The fire inspection will be required at the time prior to occupancy by any tenants, and then every two years after that. So, we do allow this by special use permit. We have permitted uses and special uses. Special uses are designed to be uses that we think could work. However, we look at those on an individual basis. So the Planning Commission has the opportunity to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. That's why it's called a conditional use or a special use. With that, I'd have any questions for me? You'd be happy. Otherwise, Mr. Rubik is here to detail this proposal.
Would the applicant have anything he'd like to say right now? Or, wait?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Any questions for anyone for him before we open the public hearing?
Well, there's always the perennial question, Mr. Rubik, who is going to be maintaining the, I would say, who's going to be monitoring the use during the time that it's rented? Do you have somebody in town?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Give us your name and address, please.
Michael Rubik, 333 County Road 550. So we actually have two close friends who are going to be managing the property, and one of them actually lived at the house before we moved in, so he's very familiar with the home.
Thank you. And you didn't have any written comments at all, from anyone?
Zero.
Zero, okay. All right, then we'll open the public hearing at 7:12. Anyone wishing to speak can speak up to three minutes. So, come on up if anyone would like to right now. Doesn't look good here.
(laughing).
All right.
Typically, you give a going once, going twice. Three times, you're out.
Okay. Well, Jason just did that, so I guess we'll close the public hearing at 7:13. And Commissioners? Any comment, motions, questions?
Motion to approve the request for a short-term rental is detailed in Agenda Item 6A and subject to the conditions that were mentioned by Mr. McCarthy.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Steve Hakinen?
Yes.
Dennis Ferraro?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Pass unanimously.
I'll be in touch, Mr. Rubik. Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
Thanks.
Moving on to 6B, another special use permit, public hearing, number 061423-2, proposed short-term rental unit to be located at 2233 Center Street in Marquette, within the urban residential district. Parcel tax ID is 520835013150. The applicant is Nicholas Simon, 2233 Center Street in Marquette. Jason.
Thank you. So I believe Mr. Simon is here. Thank you. Hi. And so, Mr. Simon has a guiding service, a fishing business in town, and saw an opportunity to utilize his home in a way to have guests or clients of his stay in a closed-loop system there for his business. And it's his right to apply for a short-term rental permit in the urban residential district, as well as any of our residential districts. So this is 16 of our township, the only urban residential district in the community, so it's a higher-density area, and really where we have probably the lion's share of our short-term rentals at this point. We'll map that out for the Planning Commission at our next meeting, or actually, we'll do that before the end of the week here. So, as you can see, the parcels are a little bit smaller. But again, we didn't receive any written comment for or against the proposal. So Mr. Simon's provided everything he needed to. We notified neighbors within 300 feet. There was an advertisement put in the paper, letting everybody know what the proposal was. And again, if Mr. Simon is successful, he'll be required for a fire inspection and a Marquette Township business license. He's also aware that if successful, that he will also lose his PRE exemption if he was to rent his home for more than 14 days in a calendar year. That's all I have, and the applicant is here if you have any questions on his proposal.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Simon, or if you'd like to give any statement at all before we open the public hearing?
Don't really have anything to add?
Okay.
Mr. Simon, I have a question, please. Want to state your name for the formality and address?
Nick Simon, 2233 Center.
Okay. So, this is the same question I asked the prior applicant. Who will be monitoring the use as a short-term rental when it's being rented?
My wife and I. We're still local. We just live in Harvey. My wife actually lives about half a mile away, so it's pretty convenient. And her daughter's daycare is about a mile away, so-
Okay. Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Any questions? All right. And seeing as we have no written comment, then we'll open this public hearing at 7:12. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward now for up to three minutes.
Your last one was at 7:12.
All right, ended at 7:13.
7:13?
Seven to seven.
7:14?
Only for a minute, so-
Okay.
Seven oh eight. Okay. So this one is at 7:12. The trick clock. I was thinking maybe the battery stopped.
Okay. Going once, going twice. All right. Close the public hearing at 7:13?
Thirteen.
All right. How about this one? Questions, comments, motions?
Yeah, just one question. When you notify the neighbors within 300 feet, how is that done?
It's done using the system that's provided by Market County GIS. So it actually-
No, no, I mean, you send them a letter, registered, certified?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, letters.
Okay, is it certified? Do they have to sign that they received it?
They do not.
No?
Okay. We could do that. Be more expensive, but we've been following the same practice-
Okay, okay.
Since I've been here 12 years.
No comments on this one at all?
None.
Okay.
And Nick, question for you. Do you have a close relationship with your current neighbor? Because that one is really close. So he knows your intentions?
Yeah, let's add, we actually went around and talked to all of our neighbors right after the first meeting, so nobody had any issues with it. They're actually happy to see a short-term rental and us not putting a long-term tenant in there. So, I think it's going to work out just fine for everybody.
Is that house owner occupied or renter occupied? The one right next to yours?
I'm pretty sure owner. Yeah, Ed was there before I was. Actually, everybody was. He was the newest one on the block. There's not a whole lot of turnover there.
Yeah, and the other question I have is, you have a survey drawing in here? How does that relate to the parcel that we're dealing with?
Well, we have the equalization layer from the county right here.
Yeah, I mean, but you have the certificate of survey from Glenn Van Nest. You reference the street address, but you don't reference the lot in the Trowbridge Park that we're dealing with?
Well, that would be on the survey.
Yeah, I got that, but I can't tie the public hearing into the lots that are on this drawing. There's no mention of the legal description of the parcel.
The one, it's 607 that we're looking at on the survey.
Did I miss that somewhere in the text?
Must have. It's the last page in there.
It's part of the public hearing notice. It's the-
Okay, all of 607 and half of 606. Is that correct?
We did have a question about that wood frame outbuilding that looks like it's on the property line. Would you know anything about that? Did you find anything about that?
The one that's on the property line was there when I purchased it, and it was in the description.
Okay.
It's a freestanding old shed. Still functional, we use it. Yeah, it's pretty much right up against my neighbor's fence.
So, lot 606 is divided in half, and he owns one half and you own the other half? That's kind of what it looks like on here?
What side of me is the lot we're referring to?
West.
To the west.
Are you looking at that right, Jason? Because 606, there's a line down the middle of it.
The one with the shed, that's going to be Leah. Ed is on the other side.
I would say that Mr. Price enjoys the half lot of 60-
606.
Yes. Just by looking at the width of the easterly lot. But the only thing about these equalization layers is that they're skewed, and they're skewed in some areas of the township much worse. You're putting a two-dimensional parcel layer on the 3D earth. And so, a lot of times, you know, there's a lot of topography in Trowbridge. So, the survey, which would ultimately be the ideal thing, which you have, is always beneficial in this case because these are not to be used for planning purposes, just for reference.
Okay, I did just notice that encroachment down there. It's a half a foot over the deed line.
It says on there. If you saw that or not. Yeah, but it doesn't have any bearing on the land use that's being proposed.
Okay.
I don't think that's the parcel, anyway. He has the east half of 606 and all of 607. And the encroachment is on, right on the property line between 605 and the west half of 606. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And there's a little compost pile over there, but that's not a structure, so.
Any other questions? Anybody ready for a motion? Roll set.
I move to approve the special use request as detailed in Agenda Item 6B for short-term rental, but with the conditions stated.
I support that.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Steve Hakinen?
Yes.
Ferraro?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay, pass unanimously. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll be in touch tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
6C, another special use permit, public hearing, number 061423-3, proposed short-term rental unit to be located at 710 County Road 550 in Marquette, in the rural residential district. Parcel tax ID is 520813202100. The applicant is Paul Foffel, PO Box 175 in Big Bay. Jason?
Let me get my spot here. Mr. Foffel and his lovely wife are here, and they have applied for a short-term rental on County Road 550. This one also is in the rural residential zoning district. Looks to be well-located in our recreational area. Triggered a hawk back, things of that nature. So we can see, a while back, Mr. Foffel acquired some property from the Lindberghs, right?
Yes.
And about 11 acres in total. There are three parcels that are comprised, there's a little bit of outdatedness with the survey information that was received, but we'll explain that here in a minute. So you can see that it's scenic residential to the east, rural residential to the north and south, a property that he owns, and then resource production across the highway and into the west. So, this is the parcel, these two are combined as of now, correct, Mr. Foffel?
That's correct.
This is a separate parcel here, this is a separate parcel here, and I believe this one's still separate?
No, that's all one.
Okay, so that's-
Like seven and a half acres.
Okay.
It's an L shape.
So essentially, three parcels that comprise about 11 acres. The issue with this one is that the cottage or the proposed structure for the short-term rental is located on this parcel. The septic is located on this parcel. However, the well is located on this parcel. And if I'm not mistaken, they went to drill behind where the cottage was, I'm assuming 60, 70 years ago at this time?
No, I believe it was in the early 70s.
Okay. Were unable to get water, so they moved around the property and located a well here. So, keep in mind, though, that he does own all of this land here and has no plans to approve any of it at this time. So I put kind of a suggestion, if the Planning Commission and through the public hearing process considers approval of this, that those parcels be combined. However, I'd like to kind of retract that because he has ownership of the property and would be limited in developing anything else on the north or south properties because they would require their own well. Or consequently, if you were to sell one of the other properties, we would require that you put a well on the existing property or tie it in. But you have an easement, exclusive formal easement, for the well on the southerly property, correct?
That is correct.
So with that, we have not received any adverse comments on the proposed. Staff does recommend approval. Contingent upon, I would say, if any of the other parcels are to be developed, that it would trigger the requirement of a well to be located somewhere on the subject property.
What's the zoning size out there?
One acre.
Rural residential one?
Yes. He's got a lot of room to work with. So, but he has indicated at this time, you don't have any plans to approve any other part of the property or parcels.
At this time, no.
So the well that he's using now was developed in the 70s?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, a well could be drilled on a property that's there now. I mean, they do hydrofracture and stuff like that. That's not an impossibility to get water, correct?
But with the easement, I don't think it's needed.
No, I grant you that, but if he ever sold-
Yes.
You know.
That's what I explained to him. So, you know me, I try to be a good coach, and I just said, you know, in the long term, we don't want you to have any impediments on the property if you were to convey it to a family member or sell it outright. So, that's the reason that we're as detailed as we are on some of these, or on all of them, I should say.
Will that easement cover that, then, the one that he has right now?
Yes, that's enjoyed by the two parcels, yeah.
And it goes across, could he sell that middle parcel there?
It's been combined already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he owes me the easement language after this meeting, and he owes me an updated survey. We'll work that out.
So you haven't seen the easement language?
I have not, but-
So we can make a contingent upon that if it's-
Wait, wait, an easement for what?
The well.
I mean, he owns that property, doesn't he?
Yes.
Why would he grant himself an easement?
Because it was provided to him with the sale.
And he has an easement. Why would he need a different language, then?
I just want to see it.
Oh, I see, okay.
I want a copy of it in my folder.
So if he couldn't find any water on that property, if he ever did sell the other one, could he provide an easement to that well from his property?
Yes. That's the way it's set up.
I thought that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But if another structure goes up, then unless those are historic parcels, much like the Phil's 550 guys, there may be an opportunity to put in a mound system and share that. A lot of those parcels in that area are of those historic nature where, you know, they don't require, you know, an additional well that could be shared, but that would be determined by the health department, not us.
So, was it rock that they were dealing with? Was that the issue, they couldn't get water there?
I would have to ask the applicant.
Okay.
I don't know that either.
Yeah, 50 years ago, a lot.
I would assume it's rock, given where it's located. Other than that, staff's comfortable with it.
Would you like to provide any more, another statement or anything before we open the public hearing?
I'm good. Thank you.
I would like to add something on behalf of the Foffels. He also included in his packet a number of receipts. The place was completely gutted. All the electrical was upgraded. The entire structure was upgraded, insulation, siding, windows, roof. So, just want to make sure that the Planning Commission's aware of the investment that's been made there.
Okay, well then, let's open this public hearing at 7:27. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward now for up to three minutes.
I have something here.
Okay.
Neil Nickinen, I live on Old Saloon Trail, and I'm wondering, is that property at all adjacent to the road going into Old Saloon Trail?
The northerly parcel is-
It's adjacent to it?
I think it is. Yep. There was an easement that was provided, it looks like maybe by Dr., well, it was provided by, at the time, probably the Lindberghs to the Gs to make that accessible.
Right on the entrance?
Yes, sir.
And also, you mentioned wells. Being that I live up there, the wells are close to 400 feet, and it's a very low recovery. They're like a $40,000 well. I'm kind of wondering, because you have a big gravel pit right across the road there, and it's kind of turned into a mine pit with all the digging and standing water, is that a concern with the commission when you allow the, basically, to dig down into the water table across the road?
Has no relevance on this inquiry, but I'd be happy to talk to you at another time about that. I didn't catch your name, sir.
Neil Nickinen.
Neil. And you're located where?
Old Saloon Trail, 111 Old Saloon Trail. You go in about maybe a quarter mile and drive a little down there. I think I talked to you before, about if you were there, about another bed and breakfast or whatever it was there a while back.
Yeah, you're welcome to contact me on that subject at another time.
Is there also a sunset clause to this bed and breakfast? Or what is this, a short-term rental?
A short-term rental, yes, sir. Is there a sunset clause to it?
Yeah.
No. I mean, the use travels with the property. So as long as the Foffels keep up on it and we don't get calls from the Sheriff's Department multiple times a year, or, you know, dogs, fireworks, bonfires, you know, things of that nature, then I think they'll be okay. We have not had a single issue, and I say that proudly, with any of the short-term rentals that we've approved. I mean, they kind of self-police themselves, right? Because if you're renting from me, I'm going to review you as my guest. And you review me as the host. And so if there's any red marks on your Airbnb account, chances are you're not going to be renting from anybody. So it does do a nice job of policing itself, and I think that's one of the reasons why it seems to work. it seems to work.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Brianna Akerly, I'm on 120 Old Saloon Trail.
Brianna Akerly?
Yep.
Okay.
And I really appreciate all that he's done to the property, it was a disaster before, so it's a great improvement. My only concern is there's a trail that runs on the back of my property that connects to other properties, including his, and I'm worried with rental, that people are going to be using that and coming onto my property on that trail that connects all three.
What trail is it?
It's like a two-rut road, we've had issues in the past with dirt bikes going through.
Is it along the Old Werewell grade?
No, not that one, it kind of cuts in between on the back of mine and then towards the back of yours, and it then connects up to Old Saloon Trail.
Okay, is it a, is there an easement for the trail, or is it just kind of a lousy affair?
It connects to Partridge Bay Trail as well, that road.
Well, that's a county road, right, or a private road?
Private road, yeah, and we've had issues in the past, so I'm just worried about people-
Yeah, I would say if you have any issues with trespassing, you can call myself, or you can call the sheriff's department. Address your concern.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, going once, going twice. Close the public hearing at 7:32. Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
I'll ask Denny's question, who's going to maintain the short-term rental?
I maintain it. I have several others, and I maintain those also.
Sorry, I missed that meeting.
Sorry.
So I can make the motion to approve the short-term rental, located at 710 County Road 550, and the parcel tax ID number.
No, just as listed in item 6C.
Yeah, perfect. Way too many numbers.
Second. Do we have to make an easement in there or a motion?
I don't believe so, the easement exists, I just need to see the language, so I would say as-is is fine, and I'll follow up with them.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Linda, Linda moved, I seconded it.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll call vote, Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Bethany Cody.
Yes.
Amy Ferraro.
Yes.
Steve Aikinen.
Yes.
Johnson's, yes. Okay, they're all set, pass unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Foffels, we'll be in touch tomorrow.
All right.
Perfect. Let's shift gears.
All right, 6D, special use permit public hearing. Number 061423-4, proposed daycare center to be located at 650 Commerce Drive in Marquette, within the Zone Developmental District. Parcel tax ID is 5208-450-00700. Applicant David and Jennifer Hayes, 4996 Danforth Road in Eskenaba. Jason?
Yes, received an application for bona fide daycare center. It's funny when you have all these issues that are mentioned in your township about needing housing and daycare facilities, and voila, we have proposals. So, this property is located pretty much kitty-corner from the fire department to the south and east, along Commerce Drive, has great access, great vision on areas for ease of access, and the proposal is to develop a 8,000-square-foot daycare facility on a property located in the development district. The daycare facility itself is actually a permitted use, however, because it is located adjacent to residential zoning and land use, a public hearing is required. So, we have noticed numbers within 300 feet of this property, we did get a call from the resident to the south, just wanted to ensure that you were going to leave the buffer that was actually negotiated by myself and the former property owner, ahead of them moving forward on any kind of development with the property, just because that, we knew that resident was there and they'd come to visit us quite often, so we wanted to make sure that there was adequate buffer yard on that location, and there is. So, you can see by the application, the applicants have put together a nice narrative for you, hours of operation, proposals, as it is part of the, you can see there, it's located in the development district, and you can see that there's a residence, a larger residence, but a large residence here, here, and here, and this is the proposed location for the 906 research and development proposal, which was approved last year, which hasn't commenced yet, by the way, as you've probably noticed. Along with the special use permit or with the public hearing, a site plan has been provided, so if this land use is approved, the next agenda item, as you saw, was a site plan review, full bona fide site plan review. So we just wanted to show you that a site plan has been put together, and we have, other than the phone call, just doing some fact-finding, we have not received any written comments on the proposal, and as you know, daycare in the community is a desire to use, so our staff is pleased to have received this application and to hopefully move it forward, barring any concerns from any of the surrounding residents, as it is a public hearing. More questions that the planning commissioners may have, but their civil engineer, Brian Savlinen, is here, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Hayes, to answer any of your additional questions you might have.
Any questions on this one? Or anything you'd like to add to this, Brian, or?
I'm Brian Savlinen, 3224 US 41 West, Marquette. I'm the civil engineer here for any questions you may have, and the Hayses are here, and Jennifer would like to make a statement as well.
Jennifer Hayes, 4308 K Road, Park River, and I just wanted, I just wanted to give a little bit of a background, my husband, David, and I were, of course, the owners of the Country Schoolhouse Child Care Centers. This is our 23rd year in business, and we currently have five locations throughout DUP. We've been looking to bring our services to the Marquette area for many years, but it was very difficult to find a location that would be convenient for families, but also something that we could build brand-new that would just do justice to the families, and so we're very hopeful to do that here. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Hayes, could you just remind us, and I know this was briefly discussed when the request to set a public hearing was, but can you just give us a little brief rundown of about how many children, what age groups, and, you know, by number and so forth?
Certainly, this facility will host up to 98 children, and all of our facilities are set up with the same idea, service for all age groups for a family, so we have infant through school-age care, and the classrooms, the facility is set up, so each of those age groups will have their own classrooms, and this facility will also have a large motor room, which is a luxury and just a wonderful thing to have during our cold winter months, of course, for the children. Our hours of operation are 5:30 to 6:00, so we are open a little bit earlier than commonly known for childcare centers, just for the simple fact that a lot of families work at 6 o'clock, therefore, you know, they need time to drop off the child and then, of course, get to work, and we're Monday through Friday, we're closed all major holidays, and we're closed weekends.
When you say school age, how old can a child be and still be cared for in your daycare center?
11 years of age at this time.
Wow, okay. And do you have separate programs for preschool as well?
Yes, we are a full preschool program, our preschool actually, we actually introduce the whole, the preschool programs with our toddler classrooms, very obviously age appropriately, very, it's play-based, but we do introduce it with, beginning with our toddlers, and then, of course, it increases with the increased age groups, from the two-and-a-halfs to the threes to the fours. We use high scope for our curriculum, we use that at all of our facilities.
Do you anticipate hiring staff locally?
Absolutely.
What's your, what numbers of people do you, I'm not trying to hold you to anything-
No, no, that's fine, you know, it's going to vary from each of our facilities. What we find has worked very well for us over the last almost quarter of a century is that we'll have, it could be anywhere from, you know, 18 to 26 staff members, and the reason I say that is when you meet somebody who is a good fit, and they're going to be a wonderful addition to your facility, they may only want to work four hours a day, five days a week, so when that's the case, then that's where you may have more part-timers than full-time employees.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple things? So you have children from four weeks old and up?
Yes.
Do you have any staff that are certified in health, you know, LPNs, nurses, anything like that? Is that a requirement by the state at all?
No, it is not, every one of our, every one of our staff members, we actually go above and beyond licensing requirements to ensure that they are all certified in CPR and first aid, and then we do annual health and safety trainings, and then an additional 24 hours a year of just appropriate trainings, depending on which age groups that the staff members work with.
So children that age, do they have separate facilities, I mean, I mean, you know, cribs, beds, that kind of stuff?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so they're not all classrooms, then, obviously?
Well, we call them classrooms, with, like, this facility, for instance, because there's such a need, not only for childcare, but especially for infants, infants and toddlers, it's a lower ratio, so this facility, over, we've taken all of our years of experience and never dreamed we could actually do something like this, so we're very excited, and this facility will have two infant classrooms to keep the ratios small in each of those classrooms, but still allow enough of the capacity to help the need in the community, and then it will have two toddler classrooms, and then the three preschool classrooms, along, again, with the large motor classroom.
So, so the children that are school age, they would be picked up in the morning by the bus if their parents drop them off and dropped off again after school?
Yes.
Is that how that works?
Yes, typically, that's the way, I mean, that's the way where some children may come before and after, some only before, some just after.
Okay.
But we would have, we would have the classroom space for them, and then, yes, the buses work very well with us.
Okay.
For pickup and drop-off.
Just a little reminder, God forbid anything ever did happen, but you've got the fire department right across the street.
Yeah.
Should keep your insurance rating down a little bit.
So I have a question, just, and I don't know that daycare facilities allow volunteers?
Yes, actually, we, you follow the same procedures as our staff members, so there's a full background check, and they have all the other paperwork, anything, as if you were an actual paid staff member, but over the years, we actually, we've had volunteers that come through, a lot of times it's grandparents, where they just want to come in and maybe reach the children for, you know, every Wednesday at a certain time, but we're open to all of that, I just think, our philosophy has always been that we're partners with our families, we want to be like that home away from home, and over the years, we have had the pleasure of, you know, families just growing with us, I've had some of the same families with their first through sometimes even sixth or seventh child, and, you know, starting, I think it was two years ago, we've had our first children who've come through, now are bringing their children to us, so yes, that partnership, I think, is important, the more the family involvement, the better.
So we just have a seniors living establishment, I guess I'll call it, very close, just across the highway.
Oh, I didn't even realize that.
Lost Creek, right? Yeah, Lost Creek.
And we, we would love the opportunity, what we do in cases like that, we'll partner with them in cases of the volunteering, but then also, we have another facility that's seen this in a very close proximity, but the children would go and do like Christmas songs, and they would do activities for them, and they'd make it like a planned event several times a year, and that has always worked out really well.
And we have a wonderful community room right here.
Well, and thank you for that information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Brian some questions when he, when he gets up there. I noticed on your life safety plan, you must have distances, the furthest distance to doorways to exits, is that correct?
Yeah, and that, that actually was prepared by Richard and the-
Yeah, I mean, from what I recall, I think, you know, code is for different buildings is up to 75 feet, I noticed your distances are shorter, but are there specific distances for daycare centers because you have infants and small children?
I'm not aware of that, but it's like David is.
Okay, I was just kind of curious.
Infant rooms, and I believe toddler rooms must be 50, within 50 feet of a main exit.
Okay, a little, a little bit smaller than like a general business code.
But in addition to that, we have an exit door in every classroom.
Yep, yep, now is it a sprinkled facility?
No, because we have an exit door in every classroom.
So it's not sprinkled, okay. It's not required to be sprinkled?
No.
No?
10,000 square feet, I believe, is the threshold.
Okay.
Or if there's a basement involved, it needs to be sprinkled, but there isn't.
Okay. And where's a mechanical room on here?
I'd have to look at the floor plan there.
Yeah, we can discuss the use now, the site plan would be next in-
Okay, I'm sorry, sure.
That's in your packet?
Yep, I got you, okay.
That's good, Brian. Okay, so let's open up this public hearing at 7:48, anyone wishing to speak can come forward for up to three minutes. Close the public hearing at 7:48.
I'm going to say 7:49.
All right.
You can say whatever, we don't know. Yeah, look.
Close at 7:48, I might watch. Hey. Comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, I think you could open a second one up here quick and add that field, too. I mean, seriously, Marquette is a daycare wasteland up here, I mean, it's a serious issue, so, I mean, if you can find a place, I think you, maybe even three of them. No, I'm serious, I'm serious, try finding daycare.
Yeah, oh, it is hard, people tell you that.
It's affecting the workforce.
Yeah, yeah.
We actually currently have three in Delta County, we've been in operation for 15 to 20 years, and they're all full with a two-year waiting list, unfortunately.
We'd even like them open till midnight because we have a hospital that has-
Yes, we've talked with the hospital.
Seven, yeah, they work seven to seven.
Yes, I, maybe at some point, this will be our starting point.
We've always built daycare centers about 4,000 square feet, and we know the need here, so we went double.
You can always go up, too.
Well, sure, welcome projects. Well, sure, welcome projects, so I'm glad you chose Marquette Township also. Motions?
Move to approve the proposed daycare center at sixty, six five oh Commerce Drive in Marquette. Stated in item sixty of the agenda.
Sixty.
D, right?
Sixty.
Yep.
I'll support that.
Any more discussion? All right. Roll call vote, Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Dusty Cody.
Yes.
Kenny Ferraro.
Yes.
Steve Aikenin.
Yes.
Jim Johnson's, yes. Congratulations.
And good luck.
When do you plan on opening?
Our, our hope, our plan is to open next year. Yes, so.
And after we get approved with the site plan. If, if you get approved.
Yeah.
If we start building in July, our builder's thinking maybe eight months.
Yeah, yeah.
You can get it closed by winter, hopefully.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see, let's see what happens here.
All right. Moving on to six E, site plan review number zero six, one four, two, three dash one. Proposed eighty-three hundred square feet, square foot daycare center to be located at six fifty Commerce Drive in Marquette, within the development district. Parcel tax ID is five two, zero eight, four five zero, zero zero seven, zero zero. Applicant, David and Jennifer Hayes, four nine nine six, Dan Fourth Road, Estnaba. Jason?
Well, I'm going to go through just a couple items and then I'm going to let Sav earn his fee here. First of all, as you know, the zoning is the development district land use. So along with that, we have some contingencies in the approval recommendation, but they are very common to our normal review recommendations. So with that, I'll let Sav go through the site plan.
All right, um, can you get to that floor plan first, like you chose deeper than.
I see it.
Okay.
Should have brought my glasses.
Gotcha. So you can go back to the site plan.
This is the util, this is like the less congested.
This is the landscape plan that handles the, like the buffer yards and things of that nature. If you've been by the site recently, most of the interior is cleared, there are some random trees that are still left. It is still fairly wooded about, I would say, the southern thirty feet of it. And we do have a, the, it'd be the north east corner has a, has a rock outcrop, actually, and has quite a bit of wooded area. And that's the one residence isn't directly connected, but it's off that northeast corner. So I had actually, you haven't seen it yet, but the nine oh six, I also did that site design. Similar issues where we've had to kind of keep, especially in the north side because of the rock concern and everything, keep everything towards the front of the road, it works out better with grade and, and it gets things changed. So the building, actually, the floor sits about, I'd say, twelve to fifteen feet lower than the resident that is up there. So where, what we established around the back, because of all the entrances and the different age groups, they like to have a lot of outdoor space. So we have, priority on this site was actually as much playground area as possible for, for the kids. And so what we were able to do here, the, I don't know how to explain it for, the site basically goes like this. So we're cutting it in half, cutting the top, filling the bottom, and then keeping a real moderate grade, like that's technically would even be considered handicap accessible in the playground areas. So I kept out the drainage outside of those areas. We also, typically on a site like this, you see in cornerstone, we have ponds all over the place for stormwater. Underneath this parking lot is actually an underground stormwater. Had we tried to do a pond area, it would have took away from some of the playground. So, and it would have also, because of some of the age groups we're talking about here, we really don't want that type of thing on this site. So we put all the stormwater underneath the parking area. Typically on a site like this too, one thing we look at doing would be one driveway, if possible. We actually have enough drainage that does meet, I believe, yours own, to, allowed to. But we also want to, because at a daycare facility, people get used to dropping off buses due in turn. So what we did with the southern drive, this is basically enter only for buses to be able to come up. We created a loading zone in front of the, and that's, that could be buses, could be parents dropping off. We tried to create as much area so we're not backing things up, you know, but parents can still pull in to either parking lot on either side should they need to. The driveway on the, on the north end is actually located at about the high point of, of, what is this, Roading Course? Commerce. Commerce. So the, the drainage does just run to the south. We don't need culverts up there to do that. There is an outlet trench down here. But again, we're intercepting all the stormwater, putting it into an underground basin. And then it outlets emergency flow into.
When you're talking about underground basin, are you talking about tanks?
Uh, it's basically half culverts.
Okay.
It's a stone basin. It's something real similar that I did one for the Verizon building, similar thing. And there's probably a couple, I've done ones that are just natural stone bed, but this has more open area, allow more volume. Because it, this site does create, you know, even though a lot of it is green, because it wasn't green before, following the standards, you know, we've got to be able to capture ten-year storm and, or a hundred-year release a ten. And it gets a little complicated, but we haven't shown the easement on this yet. But right now, the, with the basin being under here, we'll, we'll have to get in the stormwater agreement, which is part of the condition. I'm assuming right now that we would basically make this corner all accessible to the township. And, and quite frankly, I just, I just need to say that one thing that would really simplify the stormwater ordinance is to allow a blanket easement for township people to come in and access the stormwater facility, no matter where it is on some, not just this one, but any one. It's like, surveyors can love these things because of, like, one of the last plans we did, actually at three different sites, but the amount of survey work that went into, to defining an easement, just for your maintenance guys to go and look in a manhole, is crazy. Sorry, but, but that's something to consider in the future. But we will create those easements to allow for the access as part of the condition. So with that, the, there is one minor chain architect contacted me yesterday. And with the mechanical room being back here and going through, they need a two-inch line, not a one-inch that I call out right here. And we're actually going to end up routing that around the back to go directly in. But that'll be part of another condition is with your, your utility primary requirements, that, that'll be shown in that, so.
So, so I've driven by that site a lot of times, there's some big aggregate in there.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, is there ledge in there?
There, there is ledge, at least up on this edge, I don't think there is down here so much.
I mean, I mean, it seems to me you'd get some pretty good drainage just with the native soil there unless, is there, is it not deep? Because I know you've got, you've got the cattail pond across the way, so, I mean, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of ledge in the upper end. And actually down here, we're putting a lot of fill in. You know, we got like eight or ten feet of fill. So where our actual underground system sits is almost on, we go into native ground, maybe a foot.
Okay.
And then it's there, so. But we need to have three foot of cover over that too, just for structural integrity. So that being said, I guess, you know, I, you guys know me, I can talk forever, so. I'll just state questions.
What kind of surface for the playground?
Uh, just grass.
Grass, okay.
The only thing that's kind of, there are some stoops out here. And even where it's fenced in, we do slope it away. And we have, we have a storm basin here, but it's not within the fence. And then it goes underground into a shallow basin over here, so.
Playground may be wood chips.
Yeah, I mean, it's not an impervious surface, it's not concrete.
I want to make sure it's.
Yeah, just for drainage.
We have to have the proper fall.
Sure.
Soft, soft material wherever we need it.
But there's no hard surface, no.
Yeah. So you should get a lot of natural drainage, too.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, our big concern is just containing the upfront stuff from coming into collars and handling it.
And rough drains?
I've directed them to go to here, I don't know that they're part of the final architectural plan.
Okay.
Whether they're guttered or whatever they do, they're coming on the parking lot, they have to get into our system.
Okay.
I've got basins like here, it's not on this sheet, but here, here, and then a couple down here and a big curve down there.
Retention basins, detention basins?
It's retention. Technically, it's detention once it fills up to about three and a half feet deep, but that takes one heck of a storm.
Yeah, you do have overflows to get it out of there though.
Oh, yeah, you have, you know, you hear about a hundred-year storm and design storm is a twenty-four hour duration. But every year, there's a hundred-year or more stormwater event that happens over a two-hour period. So when you see all of a sudden there's a pond filling up where it was designed for a hundred years, well, you just had one, but it was so intense for a shorter term, you do get into overflows. But, but it's designed to meet your, your requirements and all those calks have been provided. And again, it's not, there'll never be surface water near any of the children play areas.
Thanks, Brian.
It looks like to me, from when you're pulling in in the morning, none of the headlights will be shining into that single-family house there.
No, in fact, like I said before, that thing is fifteen feet higher than the floor of this.
That's an accessory structure as well, his, his actual home is east of that.
So even pulling into the upper parking lot, that's going to just be pointing at the backyard when the hill's going up.
I can't really see it on there, but.
Yeah, those aerials are right there, so.
So that's an accessory structure?
Yeah.
Extreme rear yard. So along with that, project compatibility, obviously, the daycare center is permitted. It jives with the master plan and the future land use plan for this area. Landscaping is adequate and there is a buffer yard requirement, both on the south, which is existing and doesn't need to change. But then there's some plantings on the east side, adjacent to that easterly neighbor that'll be addressed per the site plan that's been submitted. Parking and circulation, all of that appears to be in compliance with the ordinance, the amount of spaces, the handicap spaces, et cetera. There's a six-inch diameter sanitary that'll be tied into, that is running along and enjoyed by the business park. The fire department has provided their review and recommendation for approval on it. Believe it's a two million dollar project estimated, so thank you for that investment. A financial guarantee of twenty thousand dollars will be required. That's to ensure that the landscaping is placed per the plan and that we receive as belts to all of the development that occurs on there. Signs will be approved at a time in the future when they're approved separately. And as Brian's aware, and I'm sure he's told you, all of our lighting in Marquette Township for commercial development is required to be downcast, full cutoff, dark sky friendly lighting. With that, staff recommends approval of the proposed site plan contingent upon the submittal approval of items three D, which is the grading and stormwater plan. Three E, which is the utility connections. Three I, which is signs, three J is lighting. And number four is all Marquette County Building Department permits as required and the financial guarantee that I mentioned. As part of the business park development, it'll also share the hip roof look, looks very similar to Marquette Township Hall, actually. So these are the north and south elevations, coved, and these are the east and, I'm sorry, these would be east and west elevations and this would be north and south. So bricks, brick structure, hip roof, timeless design. And here are your floor plans. There is your floor plan, excuse me, only one floor.
This wouldn't be a floor.
You'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Looks good to me.
I'm accepting motions. Motion to approve the site plan as described in item six E of the agenda with all the conditions stated by Mr. McCarthy.
Motion to support, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're done, finally.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
For your investment in the community.
Thank you.
So, starting tomorrow then?
I would like to, but I got to get them.
The architectural permits too, so.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, we're almost to the sixes, six F. Special use permit public hearing request, zero six, one four, two, three dash one. Proposed solar energy rooftop system on a property located at twenty-three, twenty-five West Grove Street in Marquette, within the rural residential district. Parcel tax ID is five two, zero eight, zero two eight, zero zero three, zero zero. Applicant, Lucille and Roger Contoy's, twenty-three, twenty-five West Grove Street in Marquette. Jason?
Mr. and Mrs. Contoy's are here, okay. Make sure that we noted that you were here. Uh, thank you for your application and it's unfortunate that we are currently in transition with our residential solar language and our zoning ordinance. For the rest of you that are here, we are in the process of making this a permitted by right use as opposed to a special use. We're probably a little bit behind the times there, but thanks to our staff planner, Eric Powers, he is moving that forward with the planning commission, so we've actually scheduled a public hearing for the twenty-eighth. However, that process, as the planning commission knows, typically takes sixty to ninety days, depending upon the county planning commission and when they meet. And so they've chosen to just move forward with the special use permit that is existing. However, Planner Powers wanted me to mention that this would meet the permitted use requirements of the zoning text amendments that we're proposing. So with that, we are requesting a public hearing be scheduled, I believe it's on July fourteen?
Well.
July twelfth, you're right. So the first meeting in July, and they're satisfactory with that date. The application's been submitted, it's complete, and all of the fees have been paid. So the plan. So the planning commission, in a special use or a conditional use permit, must schedule the public hearing. Thank you for coming today. Any questions of myself or the applicant?
I have a question, is this gonna be, uh, for your, on your personal residence?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can't orient myself, where's Vanden Boom on here?
Vanden Boom is, uh, this is right next to the Well Road, actually.
Is that the Well Road right there?
Yes, sir. Uh, Vanden Boom's right.
I got you, okay, I just, okay.
We're just down a little bit from that logged out property that we were talking about when we passed.
That is true.
Maybe they know what's going on.
I want to order.
Any questions? Nope. Okay. Wanna make a motion for I 12th?
Move this, um, you go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, move to support scheduling a public hearing for Wednesday, July 12th, as noted in section 6F of our agenda.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay.
We'll see you on July 12th. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hopefully didn't keep you guys up. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, the Stanley Cups, I'll decide.
Yeah, there's no running games tonight, we can, we can.
Yeah, really, I saw you, I'll see you tomorrow. That's how that works.
We don't have any unfinished business, uh, correspondence, so I see the representatives from Long Year here tonight. Sorry, there's not gonna be any shock and awe tonight.
Yeah, and they're still pretty quiet.
We appreciate you coming. Uh, however, and as Alyssa knows, cause we've been corresponding on the regulator, um, that, um, the public hearing has been scheduled for June 28th, you may have noticed the article in the newspaper. Um, we have sent out letters to all the neighbors, just the similar way we did the last time. And so what I've done tonight is I've prepared, actually on Monday night, cause we did a bus tour on Monday night, uh, just around the township to look at new developments and things that are coming up and actually developments that have been constructed too. Um, I sent them home with their full plan set and the full binder of information that you guys have provided. Linda Winslow was not present on Monday, so she gets hers tonight. I also prepared a memo of all of the, uh, agency reviews that have, uh, been submitted back to us and then relayed those back to you today along with our comments, our staff comments. I feel like the project has already been going on for a couple of years, which is kinda heavy.
You and me both.
But, uh, personally, I'm excited to move this forward and get it off center and get it, uh, to a point where, we're moving forward from one way or another, and I'm sure the planning commission is too, so, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions or, really not designed to get into a debate or any kind of back and forth tonight. This is just to provide the planning commission way ahead of time, um, this information so that they have plenty of time to digest the amount of information that you've, uh, and your team have put together, so thank you for that. Any questions on that at all, guys? I don't think it's the time. Okay.
I don't have any com, I just have a comment, I, I just hope this can all work out where we can get this project going, because it's something else like daycare that's badly needed for this area. So I hope everybody can work together.
Yeah, it's about balance and hopefully we find that balance and move forward together. Uh, 6B, 2023 property maintenance, we have begun property maintenance. There are a couple, or one in particular along County Road 550 that we are probably gonna armor up with and bring some other entities into, whether it be Eagle or the county, um, and I'm sure you know what property that is. Uh, but we have had a couple complaints pop up too, that Eric has been addressing, um, as he has time to do. Very busy in the office now for two people. I, I feel that we're as busy as the city is in some respects, uh, in our office, but we managed to get it done with him and I, so. Uh, and then just a point, uh, we did schedule the solar energy systems public hearing for June 28th too. So we'll have the long year public hearing and this public hearing. And I really am hoping that we don't put anything else on the agenda, because I do feel that those two, well, not so much the agenda item, but certainly the long year agenda item, I think we'll have a full room, I think we'll have, uh, plenty of commentary. And I'm hoping that between staff and yourselves, we can really do a good job of explaining this project. The limitations that are in place, the opportunities that are in place, uh, and, and get it going. So, um, with that, that kinda covers correspondence, unless you have any additional comments for me? Going once? Um, so that moves us into reports.
Right. Mrs. Winslow has a township board report.
I do. And my guess is that you've all been getting the minutes, so you're probably following along closely with that. We, um, we did, uh, meet with Jen Hill virtually, she is our state representative. She didn't really have a lot of information to share, it is videotaped, if you wanna listen to her, um, comments. She had some good things to say about the school, education, um, but the budget is not signed and won't be signed till June 30th at midnight, right? That's when it's due, so, other than that, we're just plugging along. We are busy, Jason is right, we are a busy township, yeah.
She wasn't in support of getting money for?
Um, no, she did not really say that, I, I, I think people will misunderstand. I'm not sure, um, it's probably good for you to listen to what she said. She talked about a pot of money, I, I'm not quite sure what her pot of money is. She talked about the division of that pot of money amongst all of the, uh, representatives. So 109 gets a pot of money and she talked about how she was going to divide her pot of money. Okay, but I, I, I'm not real sure, and, and this is Linda Winslow. I'm not real sure that pot of money is the pot of money that we were talking about for other projects.
Look for the, gotta look for the rainbow.
You have to be optimistic.
No, at the end of the rainbow, there's that pot, you know?
Yeah, well, it's at my house, you can come get some, okay, the kids love it. Anyway, so, so, so stay tuned in, stay, um, stay, yeah, stay up, yeah, mm-hmm, cause I'm still about the speed limit and I see that bill is still out there, okay? Coming back to us to make decisions about how fast people can travel on our roads, everybody with young kids, you want the speed limit and bikers, you want that speed limit. That's enough, that's enough, Jase.
Uh, possibility that we can, that that money would be.
I don't know what money she's talking about, that's what I'll say, okay?
So it's not off the table completed at this point.
I don't think anything's quote off the table. That's what I, that's what I, Linda Winslow think, okay? Listen to what she had to say, but you'll probably be.
Confused?
Well, you probably will wonder what she's talking about. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, road committee met and Eric wanted me to relay that the, uh, road committee supported the county's, uh, bid package for the crack seal and so did the board then, um, for their projects in 2023. So I can provide you with a detailed list of the roads that'll be maintained via crack seal, um, at our next meeting. The rec committee met, uh, last, well, it was May 16th, they meet again next week. But at that meeting, we discussed, um, the fact that our 2023 Trailhead grant application is administratively complete, next steps on that'll be them coming up here to do a site visit sometime in July. And then we will find out if we're successful or not sometime in December. Uh, we also completed, uh, the remaining scope items for the tunnel project. Uh, COVID messed that all up and we installed a park bench and a sign kiosk on the south side of the tunnel. And all that's left is to put up that nice plaque that we, um, denote the DNR for their financial contribution to the project. So we'll be closing out that grant application and requesting our final reimbursement. And then we also, it's not many times that I get to run into Mr. Roger Crimmins, usually when he comes to the office, it's not a pleasant visit. Um, I hadn't seen him in three years, uh, and he came in with this high vis vest on. And I grabbed my ordinance and I said, okay, here we go. And, um, he actually asked, uh, for the ability to tie in the snowmobile trail to the Texas Roadhouse and Panera Bread, um, developments, which I thought was a fantastic idea. Although we cannot spend public funds on a private connection, I did put him in touch with the DNR and the snowmobile club, so hopefully that can be accomplished. In the future, um, if you remember when we did the roundabout and tunnel project, it was always our, uh, goal to tie pathway all the way from roundabout to roundabout, but it just wasn't in the funding, the budget. Hopefully, that project will continue to be a priority for the DDA, let's say, or maybe a future transportation alternatives program grant. Uh, but at this time, they're kind of on their own and I let Mr. Crimmins know that I appreciated his, uh, foresight and hopefully they're able to work something out with the snowmobile club in the interim. Excuse me. That's it for recreation committee, they meet again next week. Planning and zoning report. I mean, there's a lot going on. And tonight was very helpful, I appreciate you guys working through these projects, um, as you have. And, um, that gets a lot off the docket and now we can focus on some of the larger things that we have going. And, um, that's about all I have, I don't have any additional comments.
Can I ask you about, cause you mentioned the Panera, uh, uh, site. Uh, and I think that there was, there was some correspondence that, at least Ike, that we discussed from Roger Zappa concerning a land division application for that. Have you followed up on that?
Yeah, we will not be pursuing a land division on that development.
Is there a reason why?
Uh, because the opinion that Mr. Zappa provided, um, in my view, clearly states that it's not required.
My interpretation of it was that if it was, if it was, the footprint of the building is fine, fine. But if there was any additional external things to that building, then a land division application was required. And since they're gonna have some drive-through kiosk kind of things around it for them to get food, that was required to drive, a, a land division application, and I think he might be misinterpreting what he said incorrectly. I, I, you know, I can be stand corrected, but that was my interpretation of it. And I still think you should look a little more closely into that, because I think land division applications were put in by the state for a particular reason and for, for us to completely ignore them and just poo poo them, because some guy says, well, they don't do them in malls. I, I still think that, that, that's something that we shouldn't do, because when I was surveying, we did land division applications left and right. And they were required by the state, so I don't think you should let that just go like that. I think you get uncontrolled development that way, so, you know. And I think the same thing that happened with that, that radio tower lease that they wanted there too, that would, that would have been a, a land division application in my eyes too, that was required. But, you know, that's just a difference of opinion we have, but I, I still think that, you know, laissez faire, I think we should keep an eye on that kinda stuff.
Okay, any, uh, announcements? Any more public comment from anyone? Additional comments by planning commissioners? No?
I have one. I did receive, um, actually the township board did receive, um, a flyer about UP educational extravaganza. And one of the sessions is called Insights Into Planning and Zoning. And it is July 18th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM and it is in, um, Eskenaba area, Harris, the casino, so.
Can you zoom that, you have to go there?
Um, I think you have to go there, yes.
Check into that though, because, uh, it seems attendance is far higher and they can still charge a fee.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it is anymore. But I'll give you this, Jason, you can check into it and let us know, because.
I'll scan this and send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, cause someone, you know, we may be interested in attending and I do know there is education money in the planning budget, so it's not always that close.
Did we get that brochure?
I don't think you did.
That's the MTA one, not the Michigan, or I'm sorry, this is the Michigan Townships Association one and not the Michigan Association of Planning, which you normally would get. Typically, this stuff goes to board members.
So I got it, so he's gonna scan it and send it to you.
Okay.
It isn't really expensive to go to, it's about the thousand dollar conference.
Okay, nothing else from anyone?
Did you guys feel that the bus tour was worthwhile and helpful?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we would have planned, uh, the itinerary a little bit better, we might have, you know, visited a few more sites. Otherwise, no, I, I like doing that, I think it comes in handy.
Thank you. I do too, and I think once a year would be great, I know it's been a couple of years with COVID and everything, but we'll get back on track with doing that, it's helpful for us too. And it's actually helpful for us to meet outside of like parliamentary procedure, uh, and talk, so thank you for that.
I guess the one suggestion I would make is since there are just five or six of us, if we could get a smaller vehicle to be able to kinda maneuver a little easier.
Yeah.
I mean, it was nice being in that truck, but.
He said that's the only one that was available for that night or something.
Right, yeah, it was kinda short notice and.
It's a hell of a nice party bus.
Yeah, I mean, I felt very comfortable. And we had a good driver.
We had a great driver.
Bethany had, it was leaking right by her, so she was kind of uncomfortable.
Oh, I was fine, I was absolutely.
Wasn't leaking there, yeah? In that emergency exit up on the top? But no, I, yeah, I thought it was great. All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.